Joint hearing of the Salem City Council, the Planning Board is being held in person tonight in the City Council Chambers at 93 Washington Street on October 15, 25 at 6:00 PM in accordance with Chapter 48, Section 5 of the Massachusetts General Laws. For the purpose of discussing amendment, section 7, special residential district regulations by adding a new section, 7.4, 8.2, Smart Growth Overlay Subdistrict entitled Margin, Endicott, and High Street Smart Growth Overlay Subdistrict pursuant to Mass. General Law 40R and 760 CMR 59.00. Notice of this hearing was posted on October 8, 2025 at 12:55 PM and advertised in the Salem News on October 1, 2025, and also on October 8, 2025. Absent from the City Council, Councilors Cindy Jerslow and Councillor Caroline Watson-Feldt. The Planning Board, I am turning the floor over to the Vice Chair of the Planning Board, Sarah Tarbet, to do your call.
Present from the Planning Board, we have Zach Conter, Tom Fury is absent. Oh, here he is. Helen Sides, Josh Choriel, Graham Wing, Sarah Tarbet, Bert Reader will be joining us. And absent tonight, we have Jonathan Burke and Daryl Hamilton.
We will begin with an introduction from the Mayor and his staff as to the 40-hour process. After that, we will be hearing questions from the City Council to the Mayor and to the Planning Board. The Planning Board will also have an opportunity to speak at that time with their questions. After the Council and the Planning Board have finished their questions, we're going to open it up for the public hearing where people in favor and in opposition can approach the microphone and speak. It is not a debate, it is not really a question-answer period. I'm asking that people try to keep their comments concise, probably within three minutes, try not to be repetitive, and just try to be on point. So with that, I am turning the floor over to Mayor Dominic Pangallo.
Mr. President, members of the Council, members of the Planning Board, fellow neighbors, this evening, it's a pleasure to be with you for this public hearing. I think, as many of you know, homelessness is a crisis, not just in Salem but across our region. In the greater Boston continuum of care, which includes Salem, the number of people experiencing homelessness rose by 67% between 2023 and 2024. There's a need for action to ensure greater stability for our residents in crisis and to prevent the displacement of our most vulnerable neighbors. There's also a need for facilities that provide support to help those in need to move out of homelessness and into stability. The proposed district that will be presented to tonight, made possible by this ordinance, will help do that. It will enable LifeBridge to change from a 50-congregate-bed shelter to 70 non-congregate beds, ending the so-called warehousing model of shelter. It would create a refurbished center and expand its space for service delivery. Lastly, it would enable the creation of 41 new housing units for formerly homeless individuals and the renovation of 12 existing units. The path to tonight's public hearing started in April of 2022 when the proposed project was first shared with the community. Over the last three and a half years, it has gone through several iterations, all in response to public feedback. The original project called for 87 new housing units. That has been reduced by about half, down to 41. The original project called for demolishing St. Mary's. That structure will now be preserved. The original project would have demolished 20 Endicott Street. That structure will likewise now be preserved. The original project relocated LifeBridge's thrift store into the building. That has been removed from the project. The original project was five stories high along Margin Street and four stories high along Pratt Street. It is now reduced by a story to four stories on Margin Street and three stories on Pratt Street. These changes are followed from public meetings that exceeded those required by Chapter 40R and state law. They included community meetings on July 6, 2023, November 15, 2023, and September 5, 2024, as well as a public hearing in November of 2024, which was followed by an extended period of time for written comment. After that public meeting, there was also a meeting of this City Council's Committee of the Whole in March of 2025. Of those five public meetings, only one was required by law. Following this current public hearing, there will be further public meetings as well. As any recommendation from the Planning Board, we'll come back to the City Council for further process here. And should the zoning ultimately be approved, further permitting before applicable city boards would also need to take place in the months and years ahead. This zoning is being proposed under Mass. General Law Chapter 40R, which makes it possible for the community to shape the proposed zoning for the project and have local control. Local control over the specifics and the zoning standards we want to see, to meet local standards and better reflect our community. It enabled us to hold all those additional public meetings and to make the changes that I outlined to the proposed project. It also allowed for the inclusion of design guidelines, which were incorporated into the draft zoning, thanks to feedback from members of the community, such as Historic Salem Incorporated, and I believe they've made for a better draft ordinance. Our ability to make those changes, to have those design elements in the zoning, would not have existed under paths like 40B and Dover. In a minute, I'm going to ask Lori Stewart from my office to come up here and share some additional introductory remarks, but I want to just close with this. I believe that no one in Salem wants to see our neighbors living on the street, and that it is possible for a neighbor to a shelter to believe that too, and to also be concerned about impacts to their neighborhood. Ultimately, however, homeless shelters are not the cause of homelessness, just as doctors' offices are not the cause of illness. We don't want our neighbors living on the street, in cars, or in tents. We can acknowledge that there are impacts, and we can wish that other communities were doing more, and that the Trump administration wasn't cutting essential programs and services. Those can all be true, but they do not diminish our own responsibility to act. Like I said at the start, homelessness throughout the region rose by 67% last year. Over the last five years, the average rent in Salem increased by over a third, while the share of available apartments dropped by half. Absent positive action, more and more of our neighbors, of our constituents, will find themselves facing the prospect of homelessness. Lori Stewart is the Housing Stability Coordinator in my office, and I've asked her to join me for this introduction just to provide a brief update.
Thank you. As the Mayor mentioned, my name is Lori Stewart, and I have been working for the city for almost three years as its first Housing Stability Coordinator. During this time, I have worked with upwards of 2,000 distinct Salem residents to improve their housing stability. While all of these individuals have a uniquely painful story to tell, tonight I will tell you about one of those people, a woman named Jaclyn, who came to see me when I first started in February of 2023. I spent hours working with her to get her stabilized. I hope that her story will resonate with you because it resonates with me, and it will hammer home the need for more Salem-based services for our unhoused residents. At 70 years old, Jaclyn had always prided herself on her independence. She worked well past retirement age, standing on her feet for long shifts as a housekeeper in a nursing home. Over time, her knees began to fail her. What started as occasional stiffness turned into chronic pain that made it impossible to keep working. She tried to push through, but the pain became unbearable, and eventually she had no choice but to stop working. With no paycheck coming in and only a modest social security check, Jaclyn quickly fell behind on rent and utilities. She cut corners wherever she could, but the bills kept piling up. The stress mounted just as her mobility was getting worse. She applied for senior housing, hopeful that she'd soon have a more affordable and stable place to live. She also applied for medical priority in senior housing to see if she could move up on the decades-long waitlist. Jaclyn's story is not unusual. It's the story of what happens when people who work their full lives discover that there's no safety net strong enough to catch them when their bodies give out. She wasn't asking for much, just an affordable place to live and time to rest without fear. But even that proved hard to come by. With the eviction looming, Jaclyn made the difficult decision to leave her apartment before the sheriff showed up at the door. She found a small room to rent in Malden through a friend at church. It wasn't ideal, but it was something. The stairs that had made her old apartment in Salem a medical risk for senior housing weren't an issue in her new place, and because she technically avoided formal eviction, she lost the emergency priority status for senior housing she had been counting on. Even so, Jaclyn kept trying. She called every housing resource, filled out every application, followed every lead in Malden, Revere, Everett, anywhere she might find something stable and safe, but there are no options. Every waitlist was full, every call ended in the same. We wish we could help, but we have nothing. After several months of living in Malden, the person she was renting from told her she had to leave. No warning, no second choices. She hadn't done anything wrong, but it didn't matter. With nowhere else to go, Jaclyn packed up again. She returned to Salem in the fall, exhausted and uncertain, and found herself at the door of the LifeBridge Overflow Shelter. It was a far cry from the life she had imagined for herself at this age, but she needed a roof over her head, somewhere to sleep that wasn't a bench or a park. If it weren't for the LifeBridge Shelter, Jaclyn would have been sleeping outside. That's the terrifying truth. She had never imagined herself in the shelter, but that was the only alternative, and pride had to come second. LifeBridge was a lifeline. The Overflow Shelter wasn't glamorous. It was just a bed, a blanket, and a cot, but it was warm, it was safe, and most importantly, it was there. Still, Jaclyn knew that the shelter wasn't permanent, it wasn't a home, it's just a stop-gap measure, and winter was coming, but without LifeBridge, she wouldn't even have the chance to try. Jaclyn's story is a stark reminder that aging should not mean instability. No one should spend their final years bouncing from room to room, shelter to shelter, because there's nowhere affordable or accessible to go. Yet for Jaclyn and too many like her, this is reality. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillors and Planning Board, for having us this evening. Thank you to the Mayor and Lori Stewart for introducing this item. My name is Elena Imert. I am a Senior Planner with the Department of Planning and Community Development here in the City of Salem. Also with me this evening, from the Planning Department, Tom Daniel, the Director of the DPCD, Amanda Chiancola, the Deputy Director, and Robin Lee, a fellow planner. This is tonight's agenda for the Planning Department's presentation. We will begin with a general refresher as to what 40R, or Smart Growth Zoning, is. Then we will describe how the zoning ordinance before, rather, the zoning ordinance that is the subject of tonight's joint public hearing, which we will call the Margin High and Endicott Street Smart Growth Overlay Subdistrict, or Margin Street SGO for short, interacts with the adopted Umbrella Smart Growth Overlay District, which was adopted in September 2025 by this council. We'll then cover the details of the specific Margin Street SGO subdistrict, followed by discussion with the Planning Board and City Council, before turning it over to public comment as previously described by President Prozinski. Much of this information is available on Imagine Salem, and copies of this slide presentation, as well as a copy of the video of this presentation, will be added to Imagine Salem in coming So the zoning this evening is advanced in accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter 40R, also known as the Smart Growth Zoning and Housing Production Act. Its intent is to encourage sustainable housing development, which means a mix of building types and uses in environments that feature diverse housing and mobility options. In contrast, we would look at sprawl in which development occurs in context without pre-existing development amenities and supporting infrastructure. Chapter 40R creates incentives through cash payments paid to municipalities that adopt smart growth overlays, which conform to the state's criteria. The zoning must meet specific requirements to be eligible, and the state, through its office, through the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, assesses the eligibility of a proposed zoning district. So there are two primary modes of initiation for a smart growth overlay district. In the first, a municipality can determine an area where it would like to see dense residential or mixed-use development and create an overlay with the hope of guiding future development to that area. In the second, it's a collaboration between a municipality and a project team, in which a project is developed that advances articulated goals of a municipality, and the zoning is crafted to support the permitting of that potential project underneath that zoning overlay frame. The topic of tonight's hearing, the Margin Street SGO, falls into this second category. Again, there is more information on smart growth as a tool available on imagensalem.org. So although the Umbrella Ordinance has been adopted and is not the subject of tonight's joint public hearing, the proposed Margin Street SGO builds upon that previously adopted Umbrella Ordinance. Again, adopted in September 2025, the Umbrella Ordinance defines the purpose, definitions, process, and uses, by right uses, and parking associated with those uses that would apply to all future proposed smart growth overlay districts within the City of Salem. That established the baseline which can be built upon by any forthcoming subdistrict. For each subdistrict, including tonight's Margin Street SGO, you can build upon the provisions in the umbrella to add additional uses to be allowed by right and associated dimensional affordability, parking requirements, as well as design standards. So this slide articulates the process under which any project permitted under a smart growth overlay subdistrict in the City of Salem would go through. It's important to note that projects that would require review by the Historical Commission, for example, would still need to go before that board. That review is separate from this zoning process and is codified in the Code of Ordinances. We are aware that many buildings in the proposed Margin SGO subdistrict are or are potentially eligible for inclusion on the National Register of Historic Places and would be subject to review by the Salem Historical Commission under the city's demolition delay ordinance. I also want to note that this process is akin to site plan review advanced by the Planning Board and has public comment associated with it as well. So this slide shows us where the proposed Margin Street Subdistrict is within the City of Salem. So it is indicated in blue. That hatch line you see arcing around it indicates a half-mile radius from the City of Salem commuter rail station, and the little bus icons that you see distributed throughout the street network indicate MBTA bus service. So now that we have sort of oriented ourselves as to the location of the Margin Street SGO Subdistrict, we're going to speak about the key aspects of that proposal. And to be clear, as the Mayor has mentioned, the intent of the Margin Street SGO Subdistrict is to facilitate the potential redevelopment of the outdated LifeBridge Shelter facility on Margin Street and create opportunities to expand the city's supply of supportive housing units, which are critical to connect people with services, transition out of homelessness, and gain stable footing on the housing ladder. So again, this slide lists the key features of the Margin Street SGO Subdistrict zoning through the application of which we believe we can accomplish these goals. So the district comprises approximately 0.7 acres of land and includes the properties located at 56 Margin Street, 54 Margin Street, 7 High Street, 20 Endicott Street, and 24 Endicott Street. Again, it is located within a half-mile of the Salem commuter rail station and is proximal to both commercial and civic amenities. The subdistrict text identifies at length the uses and associated parking requirements attached to those uses. We'll get into that in some future slides, but a key use, a key by right use that we would like to identify is supportive housing. Very specific to this subdistrict is the extreme affordability that's proposed to be advanced here. So it proposes an affordability level that far exceeds the requirements in the Umbrella Ordinance, which are 20% of units to be provided at or below 80% AMI in keeping with the state's expectation, and exceeds what is required via the city's existing inclusionary housing ordinance, which would require 10% of units at or below 60% area median income. The Margin Street SGO Subdistrict proposes that 75% of residential units would be affordable at or below 60% of the area median income. Additionally, the subdistrict has a robust set of design standards attached to it against which proposed projects would be evaluated. Those standards are adapted from the design standards applied in the adjacent Salem downtown renewal area. So the Mayor and Lori both spoke about this earlier on. I'll spend some time speaking about further impetus for the development of this zoning. I know this text is quite small. Again, I want to make clear that copies of these slides will be made available, and I'll do my best to summarize the information for everyone in the room tonight. There is a number of factors that drove the development of the zoning proposal before you tonight. Concerning the need for housing, particularly affordable housing, we can look to the two policy documents at the top of this slide, Imagine Salem and our current housing roadmap, which are two policy documents which were developed with considerable community input and spoke to addressing our community's housing needs. The proposed Margin Street SGO Subdistrict responds to at least three strategies identified in the city's current housing roadmap. Strategy 17 recommends that the city consider rezoning areas within the city to support denser housing development. Strategy 19 encourages the city to advance zoning that promotes efficiency housing units, which includes single-room occupancy units, enabled via the supportive housing definition attached to this zoning, given their natural affordability. And Strategy 20, which instructs the city to find opportunities to leverage state and other resources to assist in the creation and rehabilitation of housing, which is advanced through the utilization of 40R. This zoning also exists in a broader context. Many of us are familiar with the formation and dispersal of the South River encampment. The encampment formed over the course of 2023 and at one point hosted over 20 tents and more than 40 individuals. LifeBridge received funding from the city's Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board to support additional outreach staff who worked with encampment residents to connect them with healthcare, housing, and other resources. The encampment was dismantled in June 2024 following adoption of a local ordinance prohibiting camping on public property. At that time, Mayor Pangallo made clear that the long-term solution was to get people into housing, recognizing that as the primary solution to homelessness. Also relevant to this conversation is the 2024 Gateway Cities Housing Monitor, which stated that Salem needs at least 2,229 housing units over a 10-year horizon to address our current shortage, so getting us to a healthy vacancy rate, while also keeping up with modest projected household growth and replacing the housing units which invariably get old and are taken offline each year. And so for some further context, the Housing Roadmap, that guiding policy document, identified a pretty key mismatch in our housing supply and the size of our households. So about 71% of Salem's households are one- or two-person households, where it's only 24% of our housing units are studio or one-bedroom units. So that suggests to us a need to support avenues to create more smaller housing units. From what was shared through Lori's testimony and what we know to be true through our housing needs assessment and through situations like the encampment, we know there are people struggling with homelessness and housing costs and housing instability in the city. Additionally, under our current zoning, there is limited ability to create those smaller efficiency or single-room occupancy SRO units at the scale needed to meet that need. We also know that that housing type is typically more affordable given its size, so it helps respond to both those needs articulated above. Additionally, again, this zoning would support the replacement of the outdated LifeBridge Shelter facility to better allow that organization to serve the communities that need the resources that they offer. So to respond to homelessness, we need to understand its driving factors, and according to research, housing conditions, like the cost of housing and vacancy rates, are most strongly associated with regional rates of homelessness, more so than individual factors. So for context, a healthy rental vacancy rate is 6%. In Salem in 2023, our vacancy rate for rental housing is 1.9, less than one-third of that number. The intense competition for housing means that those individuals with any disadvantages, be they medical issues, mental illness, substance abuse, a history of incarceration, job loss, they are at an elevated risk of becoming homeless. So how can the city respond to homelessness? In part, by zoning to support housing production, particularly affordable housing and supportive housing, both of which this subdistrict zoning proposes to do. So to meet those community needs, we've undertaken a lengthy process to develop the zoning ordinance that is the subject of tonight's joint public hearing. As referenced by the Mayor, this process actually extends outside of what we could comprehensively get on one slide in terms of timeline, but we have chosen here to highlight some really key points. So that first box on the top, shown in gold, is a local requirement. The city asks that any project team that was interested in establishing a smart growth overlay district host a community meeting to ensure that the community is aware of the project prior to the start of any zoning conversation. We know that the project team here has hosted several community meetings on this proposal and has had meetings with other stakeholders such as Historic Salem. Recordings of the two public meetings which were referenced at the top of this timeline here are available on Imagine Salem. In May 2024, Amanda Chiancola, the Deputy Director of DPCD, came before City Council's Committee of the Whole to give a presentation on 40R so that this body could become more familiar with that tool and what it can accomplish locally. After that time, in August of 2024, we hosted the Mayor's public hearing, at that time, for the Umbrella District and the Margin Street SGO Subdistrict proposal before you this evening. At that meeting, and for a little over a month following it, we collected public comment on that draft zoning. Over the next six months, staff reviewed the over 300 comments received and worked on revisions to the proposed zoning. At the end of March 2025, the preliminary application with the zoning attached for the Margin Street SGO Subdistrict was submitted to EOHLC for its review. At the end of June 2025, we received back from the state a letter of conditional eligibility. That included comments and requested changes to the proposed zoning. We revised the zoning in accordance with the state comments and submitted it to this body, which brings us into the regular 40A zoning process and to tonight's joint public hearing. The proposed district after this point would follow the same local process as any zoning change. Council has 90 days to act on any filed zoning, charting that from tonight's meeting. This runs to January 13, and as a point of reference, the remaining council meetings for this year are to be held on November 13 and December 4. After the joint public hearing is closed, the following steps occur in the 40A process, and so those are the tan boxes as we move towards the left of the screen. That includes referral to the Planning Board for its recommendation. That recommendation is then returned to City Council. City Council would consider it and potentially vote on first passage. City Council would then vote on second passage. These steps are a minimum. The City Council has the ability to also refer the item to committee should it choose to do so. If the zoning proposal does receive first and second passage by City Council, the city would then send the approved zoning back to the state for their final sign-off. After that final approval from the state, then development review applications for individual projects could be submitted for review under the zoning overlay. This process was shown on that earlier slide and involves the Planning Board hosting a public hearing for site plan review, which includes public comment and is the time at which conditions related to a specific project could be considered and applied. So we know there is So we know there is considerable interest in this proposal, and so wanted to provide a little bit more granular detail as to how this proposal evolved from that mayor's public hearing hosted in August 2024 to what is before the body this evening. The subdistrict zoning was included in that preliminary application, which was the focus of the mayor's public hearing held on August 1, 2024. Public comment was collected that evening and by writing for the month following, again, culminating in over 300 comments from at least 233 discreet individuals and organizations. Staff reviewed all the comments received and created an additional attachment above and beyond what is required by the state to be included in that preliminary application, and it detailed the themes and concerns present in the comments received. That is available as part of the preliminary application package, which is linked on Imagine Salem. All of that was packaged into the preliminary application submittal, which was provided to EOHLC again at the end of March 2025. After that point, the city was made aware that approximately four comments were omitted or abridged in the submittal to EOHLC. Once we were made aware of that issue, staff confirmed that EOHLC had access to those comments and confirmed that they were reviewed as part of the qualitative analysis that informed the revisions to the zoning that were submitted to EOHLC. Again, the state responded at the end of June 2025 with that letter of conditional eligibility, meaning that the proposal met the state's requirements for smart growth zoning with a few tweaks needed, and those were addressed before the zoning was submitted to this body. So now we're getting into the meat of it. This slide shows the proposed dimensional standards for the Margin Street SGO subdistrict. So at the top here, maximum units per acre. We've already had some questions on this item. This gets at the proposed residential density that would be allowed in the subdistrict. The zoning states that the allowed units per acre is 115 units per acre. The gross acreage of the proposed district is 0.68 acres. The zoning states approximately 0.7 acres. At 0.68 acres with that max density of 115 units per acre, that would enable the site to hold up to 78 units as of right. However, we know that there are 22 existing residential units within the proposed district's boundaries, so when we net those out, it allows for the possibility of up to 56 new residential units under the zoning proposal. Max building height was an item of particular community concern. There were a lot of comments that addressed building height. In response to that, we lowered the building height from 60 feet to 55 feet and also introduced another metric by which to control for height, which was the introduction of a maximum building height by stories. So what's proposed this evening is a max building height of 55 feet with a limit of four stories, and that additional height allows for things like rooftop mechanicals and other screening elements. Max lot coverage sets the proportion of a lot that can be covered by a building's footprint. A good way to think of this is if you were to look down on the site from a bird's eye view above, how much of that lot could be covered by any given building. We would propose that 75% of the lot could be covered by a building footprint. Minimum open space, we would set this at 25%, and that relies upon the definition of open space that's codified in Mass General Law 40R. And we do not propose any setback requirements attached to this zoning. So this graphic shows the Margin Street face of the proposed subdistrict and shows what a 55-foot height allowance could look like in that context. You see here the existing St. Mary's Church building, which, as the mayor noted, would be intended to be preserved by the potential project team. And you can see that a 55-foot height allowance is taller than the ridge line of the church, but sits below the peak of the cross. This slide shows the proposed dimensional requirements for the Margin Street SGO against those in the base zoning for the surrounding zoning districts, which are the R2 residential two-family, so that's shown in that red color, and the B5, which is the central business district, shown in that gray. So in the previous slide, we saw the proposed dimensional standards of the Margin Street SGO in conversation with its neighboring zoning districts, the R2 and the B5. However, I do want to be clear that the existing zoning, which is captured in the city's zoning ordinance, is not necessarily reflective of what's on the ground, as the city has a lot of what's called nonconformity. This map utilizes Mass Housing Partnership's residency tool. It shows the residential density of all parcels within a 0.2-mile radius of the proposed district. As you see, within that R2 zone, many parcels already host more than the two housing units allowed by the underlying zoning or otherwise exceed the set dwelling unit per acre requirement listed in the zoning. Further, when we look at certain housing typologies within that catchment area, that 0.2-mile radius, looking at housing typologies like apartments with over eight units, we see existing residential densities above what is being proposed attached to the Margin So this slide shows the uses allowed, again, in the already adopted Umbrella Smart Growth Overlay Ordinance. These include multifamily residential, mixed-use developments, including retail, business office, and professional offices, parking accessory to any of the above uses, and uses incidental to any of the above uses. This is just to make clear again that all of these uses are allowed by right in any potential smart growth overlay subdistrict within the city. Now, we would propose to add specifically these uses as by right in the Margin Street SGO subdistrict. So that's in addition to the uses allowed in the Umbrella District. We would allow by right supportive housing, medical clinic, educational use, and club or lodge private. The first three uses support the operations of the shelter and potential supportive housing, whereas the last use speaks to the ongoing operations of the Christopher Columbus Club. So this slide shows both the proposed maximum parking requirements for the, again, adopted Umbrella Ordinance, as well as what is being proposed for the additional by right uses for the Margin Street SGO subdistrict. You'll see that the city is only proposing parking maximums, and that is because parking minimums were removed from the adopted Umbrella Ordinance and the previously adopted Harrington Road Smart Growth Overlay Subdistrict, following a recommendation from the planning board attached to that zoning process, wherein the planning board advocated for the removal of minimum parking requirements, viewing them as impediments to the advancement of other city priorities like housing and open space. For supportive housing, the proposed maximum allowed parking is equivalent to that applied for multifamily housing as captured in the Umbrella Ordinance, and that would be 1.75 spaces per dwelling unit. For all other proposed uses, the maximum proposed parking would be one space per 1,000 square feet of gross floor area. Smart growth conceptually means moving away from car dependence and exploring other mobility options. And again, the district is located within a half mile of the commuter rail station and near to commercial and civic amenities. Further, we understand that lower-income households generally own fewer cars and that housing units which do not have dedicated parking are generally more affordable, given the high cost of providing parking. So again, the subdistrict includes significant affordability, far exceeding the city's standard expectations. As proposed, 75% of units would be made available to households earning at or below 60% of the area median income. That would ensure that a substantial portion of any future residential development that would occur within this subdistrict would be affordable, and that would be deed-restricted affordable. Again, this affordability exceeds what's required by 40R and the city's own inclusionary housing ordinance. So the subdistrict zoning also has design standards attached to it. As previously mentioned, those design standards for the subdistrict were adapted from design standards applied in the adjacent Salem downtown renewal area. The city made changes to exclude some standards from that set, which are not applicable herein. For example, stipulations around bike lanes, which are managed by the city and not undertaken by private development, in the submittal to the state. So that preceded that March 2025 submittal. Feedback from EOHLC received in the conditional eligibility level, a letter that we received at the end of June 2025 emphasized to the city that design standards need to be what they called "objective and measurable," and they included in a red line back to us some language changes to the design standards to make them comply with that requirement. So we made those changes prior to submitting the zoning to this body. We understand that design standards are important to the experiential aspects of a community, and again, we're very grateful to community partners like Historic Salem Inc. that advocated for their inclusion in the zoning and offered feedback on them. And so this slide here shows sort of key buckets which were addressed in the proposed design standards. That includes design standards for new construction, design standards related to adaptive reuse and historic preservation, public and private open space, landscaping, streetscapes and sidewalks, lighting, and signage. And again, the full text of the design standards is in the zoning draft, and there are also images which help articulate the intent in those design standards in that document as So what benefits could the city see for the advancement of the Margin Street SGO subdistrict? If this zoning overlay is adopted and the subdistrict is created, it will enable the redevelopment of the inadequate Life Bridge Shelter facility on Margin Street, allowing them to better serve our community members who are in desperate need of those services. It will expand the city's supply of housing, a considerable number of which will be deeply affordable, and it creates the opportunity to expand our supply of supportive housing in service of helping people transition out of homelessness. This zoning would also yield new tax growth associated with the introduction of new residential units. The zoning would also see from the state those financial incentives. So we would see a minimum zoning incentive payment of $75,000 associated with the creation of this district and $3,000 for every net new unit that receives a building permit, which could yield up to $68,000 at the density currently proposed. Lastly, having smart growth overlay districts gains the city favorable consideration for certain state grants because it demonstrates Salem's commitment to advancing the Commonwealth's priorities around smart growth and housing production. So that concludes our presentation, and we welcome comments and questions from city council and the planning board.
Thank you. Elena. I'll now open it up to the city councillors for questions or comments. Councilor Murcillo.
Thank you, President. So my questions, I have lots, came from the emails that we received. So in some cases, I rephrase them to kind of make them more general with other emails. So if we can start with the city and maybe possibly the mayor also. What boards will the project be required to go through? If this is passed and if the project goes on, what approvals are required?
So I can start off. This may not be exhaustive, but as we understand of the project at this time, it would require that planning board process for its land use approvals. If it is in the Conservation Commission jurisdiction, it would have to go before Concom for any necessary approvals. It would also have to go before the Historical Commission, because again, we understand that several of the properties that are proposed within the boundaries of the proposed subdistrict meet the criteria for Historical Commission review.
Okay. And the...
Oh. And also, as part of that permitting process that was outlined, the design review board is involved in the planning board review because they offer a recommendation back to the planning board as to the conformance of a proposed project with the design standards attached to the subdistrict.
Okay. And can you speak about whether this property is within the jurisdiction of the Salem Redevelopment Authority?
It is not. The SRA property line covers Riley Plaza, which is directly adjacent to the proposed subdistrict, but it does not include the subdistrict properties.
Okay, thank you. Can you speak to the 40R requirement that it provide a full range of housing choices for households of all incomes, ages, and sizes? And that's from Mass General Law, Chapter 40R, Section 6. The shelter and the new housing are for adults only, and limiting the housing units to single adults discriminates against families and couples.
So the Margin Street Smart Growth Overlay Subdistrict proposes to add supportive housing as a by right use allowed in the subdistrict. That is in addition to the multifamily residential and mixed-use development, which are allowed by right in all smart growth districts, and that's again enabled by that Umbrella Ordinance. A project permitted under a smart growth subdistrict does not need to include all uses that are allowed within that district. And further, EOHLC, which is the determining body for conformance with the state's 40R requirements, has reviewed both the adopted Umbrella Ordinance and the proposed Margin Street Smart Growth Overlay Subdistrict, and they found that both of those proposals met their requirements for 40R.
Okay, thank you. Will the larger facility negatively impact the city's economic industry, including tourism and hospitality businesses? And have local businesses provided any opinion or impact statements for or against the proposed project?
So this is Amanda Chencola with the Planning Department. We have not heard from local businesses, if I recall.
That one.
All right, Elena will take that one. And this is a housing need that the city has. And Elena went through the importance of this around Imagine Salem, the housing roadmap, articulating our housing needs. We see this as necessary for the community, not as a detriment for it.
And I would just add to sort of the tail-end question. As part of the public comment process attached to the preliminary application, we did hear from two property owners, rather, two business owners directly adjacent to the district. That includes the recording studio that's on the corner of High Street and one of the businesses that is on, I believe it is Norman Street, near, proximal to Steves, both of which did express concern with the proposal, but those were the only two businesses that we heard from. I will mention, though it is a civic organization, we did hear that the Christopher Columbus Club is fully in support of this proposal.
Okay, thank you. This was another comment. We know this neighborhood was once home to indigenous peoples. According to Historic Salem, people were still finding arrowheads and other artifacts left behind by the indigenous people of NAMCAE around the church building in the 1920s. What steps will the developer or the city take to preserve any historic artifacts unearthed during construction?
I can take this one. So attached to the, given the deep affordability that's attached to this subdistrict, the likelihood is any project seeking to place residential units on that site within the subdistrict boundaries would need to seek out subsidies from the state or the federal government. And as part of obtaining those subsidy funds, there is an attached historic review. And so if there was any concern, if there was anything to indicate to the state that there was cultural or archaeological sensitivity, they would require any project seeking to build on that site to work with them, to establish adequate protocol, to assess the site in advance, and in terms of addressing any materials uncovered through a construction process.
Is there any state guidelines or any state laws associated with this kind of find during construction?
Can you explain that? What do you mean by this?
So in any project, if the developer, the construction is digging and finds artifacts, is there already a state law or a federal law governing that finding and how to proceed?
Yeah, for any, we'll get back to the council regarding for any project, but as Elena mentioned, with this level of affordability, there would be state review or federal funding, which requires an environmental review, and that would absolutely kick in a mass historic review.
Okay. I guess that's a pre, though. I mean, unless I'm misunderstanding you. That's something that happens pre-construction, right? But I'm talking about during. Let's say that their investigation didn't find any historic, like... Let's say that their investigation didn't find any historic, like, significance.
Sure. So during construction, again, because this would have state or federal subsidy, there's an environmental review aspect to it. And with that, it's, there are standard conditions around that. So if they find artifacts of significance, then there are protocols that need to take place.
Okay, perfect. How does the design address the city's coastal resiliency overlay district requirements?
The zoning, any project within the overlay district is also, if it is in within, if it is within the coastal resiliency overlay, that district is still applicable, and that is under the umbrella district.
Great. Is it fair to assume that a larger shelter will result in more police incidents? And will a larger shelter draw more unhoused persons from other areas?
It's really a, a question outside of zoning when you're looking at police activity. But again, this, what we would expect to see as a project following this zoning is a use that has supportive services. So it would have those wraparound supportive services.
That's fair. But I'm going to push back a little bit and maybe ask the mayor to, to provide some insight into this. Because this, because the zoning is specific to the project, I think that means that the question is, is relevant and at least needs some, some information from, from the top.
In regards to the Life Bridge component, it's adding 20 beds to the shelter. Eventually, the Canal Street Overflow Site is going to be closed, so the net change in shelter beds for individual unhoused people in our community is going to decrease. Even though more will be at the site, there'll be fewer overall in the community. So if, I can't speak to whether or not it's a draw, but there'll be fewer beds overall, which is unfortunate. In terms of the Harbor Light component, you know, we have a great example. Harbor Light manages Boston Street Crossing. Those facilities prior to, in the time, comparing the time prior to Harbor Light's management of those buildings to the time after, there was about a 52% decrease in police calls for service because of their, their presence, their professionalism, the services and the management they provide there. So I, I would expect that certainly with the Harbor Light component, it could actually provide some additional stability and decrease calls for service that might be necessary in the area because there will be a consistent and professional presence providing services to the people that are tenants.
Thank you. Mayor, you might want to say for this one. There's an understandable concern about where a $65 million project, where the $65 million will come from in our current federal climate. What happens if the project is started and then loses funding and sits unfinished, which will negatively impact the neighborhood? And I think that's, it's not only this, Patrick, but it's a more general question. What happens in that case for any development that loses funding and then just sits there?
I don't want to presume to speak for the project team, so I don't want to talk about the, speculate about the, kind of the, the capital stack that's funding this project and how much of it is potentially federal or state. I think, you know, right now, there's certainly a, a challenging moment from federally funded projects. Most of those impacts are landing on states, cities and tribes trying to fund infrastructure projects, roadways, seawalls, things of that nature. The housing market and I think development around housing is structured in a way that projects that have great deal of risk may not advance at all to start. But I, you know, I don't think that it's germane to the zoning to speculate on what would happen on a project, which in this case would be, I think, moving forward in a construction phase, pretty late in the administration that we have currently in Washington DC and whatever impacts might happen in that regard. The, the funding for these projects are secured in advance. I'm not concerned about it, but I would defer to the project team to talk about whether or not they've, you know, provided any kind of thought into the federal situation right now.
Okay, that's fair. I do have a question, whether the, whether the representatives from Life Bridge and Harbor Light can also answer questions.
Yes, that's allowed, if they wish to, if they choose to do so.
Jason and Andrew, would you mind, please? So I want to preference this by saying that I think it's important with everyone in the room that a lot of these questions, we do come up often. And so I think it's a really good opportunity to talk about the project that, that will be proposed and is the reason for this zoning change. So a lot of questions are about the, I use the word entanglement of the two projects, the housing and the shelter project, where in a lot of cases, we might see them come in one at a time, they're coming in together and they're being proposed together. And so part of it is understanding where the boundaries are between the two. Are the, is the housing completely connected to Life Bridge? Do the rules for Life Bridge also cover the, the housing units and the people who live there? Can you talk about, so how, are there connections? What are those connections? Are the residents of the housing required to participate in shelter services that are offered? Will the residents in the homes be required to follow the same rules? Will they, for instance, will residents be allowed to own a car? And will residents be allowed to share a unit with a partner and own a pet? And, and I'll stop there and then there's one more.
Hi, I'm Andrew DeFrenza. For anybody who doesn't know me, I can answer the other federal question if you want, if you want to ask that one later or again, or whatever. Stick with this one for now. So there's, there's a couple of ways to think about this and different ways that the connection manifests or shows up in, in different ways. And Jason will have a better sense of this on some ways than I will. But for the, for the larger purposes, you have, you'll have two physically distinct spaces, so there's no interaction, meaning you can't go from what, from a residential space into the shelter or vice versa. You can come out and go in. But the people in the residential building, the Harbor Light building, will have exclusive use of that building. So it's not, it's not generically sort of open to everybody. But people from the residential building could participate in services at Life Bridge if they chose to and if Life Bridge wanted them to. But they're two distinct access points. They're also governed in two different ways, meaning they have different regulations and different funding sources, and so they have different accountability mechanisms. The folks who are in the residential setting actually will have leases. So those are, their, their occupancy, as it were, is governed by what a health code, which will restrict the occupancy of the unit to a single individual based on the way the health code works, and that goes through that mechanism and then through the lease and the associated house rules. So the rules are not identical, meaning somebody could have, somebody in the residential setting, sorry, I was checking the car, pet, partner. So they, they could own a car. There's no restriction to that. It's not common, but it's not prohibited. Pets, we go back and forth on those. We don't love it, but it does, it does happen. And people, sometimes it's a service pet, but it's not uncommon for there to be small pets. It's, it's not frequent, but it does happen. And occasionally, we're sort of building by building, but in all cases, if somebody requests a service animal, even if it's therapeutic services, they're almost always going to get approval for that. We could talk about that a little bit. The partner one, based on the health code, it's, it's meant as a single occupant. So somebody can have a visitor, but there's a limited amount of stay, and that's monitored. If they had somebody who moves in, that's a violation of the lease, and you could lose your housing on that basis. But the one tower, as it were, or it's, you know, reality is governed by the lease and the funding associated with the residential setting. The other one is governed by the shelter funding and the regs that are associated with that. I'm going to tag the federal funding question while we're here.
I'll, I'll get to that. Hold on. So can you just, I mean, it's, it's fine. The Harbor Light Homes on Boston Street, Boston Crossing, do all of those residents also get services from Life Bridge?
Oh, good question. Sorry, I didn't answer that one well. So nobody in, in the housing setting, you don't, you're not, we're not allowed to require anybody to participate in services. So it ends up, the mechanisms to make that happen are really twofold. One is you make the services available and interesting, compelling, helpful and proximate, and mostly people will participate, but you cannot compel. Where you can manage the behaviors is through the lease and the house rules. So if somebody is engaging in a set of behaviors that's not consistent with the regulations of their tenancy, they have, that's a problem for them. But they don't have to go, for example, to a group session on such and such on Tuesday. They are allowed to, but they're not required to. So the folks at Boston Street, a lot of them participate in services, but they're not required to do so. It's at their discretion.
Okay, great. And then the, oh, sorry.
I, I wanted to point out that this model is not new. We see the, although partnership, it's complementary, it's not interchangeable. Life Bridge currently operates 22 units of permanent supportive housing within its, its property already. And every one of those individuals signs a lease, has a, you know, a set of house rules, we'll say, but are always welcome to participate in the supportive services that the Life Bridge Shelter side has to offer. Many of them do. So the common thread in all of this is supportive services. So while it, it might seem strange to folks, the idea that they're even proximate is a good thing. Homeless individuals going into housing for their first time benefit from supportive services.
And then there was one last question about, can you review the security measures for the housing?
Yeah, so the, the housing specific, so there'll be, there are three staffers associated with that space. So there's a maintenance person, a facility person, there's a property manager, and there's a resident service coordinator there. So all those three people will work for Harbor Light. There's also cameras around the building that are able to be monitored and recorded, very similar to, that's identical to Boston Street. It's the same way that it works there. And then there's a, there's an on-call facilities. If there's something with the building, there's an on-call 24-hour person. We've wavered on this one as to whether or not there wouldn't be a live-in. We have, we have that in a couple scenarios. So that's a possibility, but hasn't been determined. But that, that would be another layer of security.
So a common theme in, in some of the emails is that people consider the housing to be warehousing. And so I'm, I'm, I'll just say that that's what it's considered. Why is the shelter model used by Life Bridge and the Harbor Light Homes, why is that not considered warehousing people?
It's an interesting question because I'm not sure what that, the definition of warehousing. I will say that we are making efforts, part of the motivation for this project is to move away from congregate setting shelters. So congregate meaning a bunch of bunk beds downstairs, you know, your stereotypical. What we are proposing is a non-congregate shelter, which means individual separations between each bed, almost like a mini-room, so to speak. So we are actually moving away from anything that might even look like warehousing. And I can't really answer towards how some, you know, SRO, single room occupancy units, I think that's the opposite of warehousing. So I guess I can't for that part.
Okay. There was another one. How does Lieutenant Governor Driscoll's statement that shelter stays should be, quote, "rare, brief and non-recurring" sync with the larger shelter proposal? How can you move clients more swiftly through the shelter into permanent housing and services? And is it through more case managers now or new building later?
It's through a lot of complex, it's a very complex issue, right? This is a complex homelessness. There's a lot of facets to it. But yes, Life Bridge's goal is to have folks in the shelter briefly and non-recurring, if possible. And that intensive case management, supportive services, a lot of the things we already do. The fact is, though, when there's not enough housing stock and there's not enough housing, there's really, you know, you sort of see the pipeline freeze up. And I think we all know well enough that we are in a housing crisis. So to, how do we do that? By doing projects like this. This is the answer to that statement, to have housing that can be set aside, homeless individuals, such as the ones Harbor Light is proposing to build, is an answer to that, be able to house people quicker with more housing.
This is a quote from one of the emails. "This is a storage facility and a detention center, and by Harbor Light's very admission, there will be very little turnover once people move in. That's not because those, those people don't want somewhere better, it's because Life Bridge and Harbor Light provide no guidance and no reasonable way out." So I'll let you address that comment. But also, can you talk about, what is the turnover in units at the Boston Crossing properties?
Yeah, that's an interesting one. I hadn't heard that quote before. So yeah, we generally would see it as a, as sort of a celebratory thing that people are not, once you're in permanent supportive housing, you're not required to leave. You can, if you, if you want to move on and move to different settings, but you're not required to. But the turnover is very modest at Boston Street Crossing. For most people, they're happy to get it and be there, but they're not compelled to stay there. So I would, I would definitely take exception to the reference. But it is a, from a system-wide standpoint, to Jason's point, I wouldn't disagree if there's, if there are better options that people can move on to, which they often do, particularly if they have a family situation or partnered situation, as we referred to earlier, that made that both possible and compelling. But if we're talking about the choices between ongoing shelter stays or out-of-doors stays or your own apartment with your own kitchen and your own bathroom, I'll take the second one, even if that's long-term. But I'm sort of a missional pragmatist.
We'll come back to the $65 million question on, on how you would manage that in this climate.
Pets? Yeah. So interestingly enough, not to, not to go too, too far down the federal rabbit hole, which I'm sure everybody will be delighted to do. In the, in the recent budget process, there were, there were a couple of improvements to what's known as the Longham Housing Tax Credit, which is the majority of the capital for something like this. So the, the, the tax credit functions through the IRS and is actually a Reagan era creation and is very painful to use, but very politically durable, oddly enough. So there were some changes in this recent go-around that made that more improved. So we're not worried about that particularly. We are concerned about budget line items at the federal level that have sources, particularly CDBG, Home Fund, some of those elements that are federal in their origin and then run through the state, but they're not primary drivers of the housing. That's, that's mostly come as the tax credit, which is stable. The biggest vulnerability, in my opinion, and, and in others, is going to be around rental vouchers. That's the potential well beyond this project, just as a broader scope. The biggest vulnerability to housing policy nationally at the moment, if there's a move, is going to be around those vouchers. That's the thing to watch. There are ways around that at a state level, but it, it could create pain and slowness, but shouldn't be, shouldn't be fatal, particularly because the credit is steady.
I've heard the same thing from the housing authority, so yeah.
Life Bridge, and I don't think Harbor Light either, would embark on a project that we think would fail at any moment. One thing we want to make sure doesn't happen is a disruption of services. Even during the project, we're looking at a phased approach so that those services are never disrupted. So it's, it's not as if we're motivated to, to do this at all cost. We would have to have that conversation. We're fortunate enough that much of what we will build will be funded privately. So I'm a little less worried, for example, about state investment.
Okay, great. This was a question about the clients at Life Bridge. If an unhoused person arrives at the shelter from outside of the state, like their original home was outside of the state, is there an attempt to get them back to their hometown where they will be closer to family and other supports? And if so, is there pushback from the, the home state or community? And do clients ever want to go back home but are unable to do so?
It's a great question, actually. Reunification is actually one of the, the greatest and most successful paths someone can take when they, they show up at Life Bridge, for example. It's not uncommon for Life Bridge to fund privately folks who, who want to go back to where they came from. And that's typically, you know, a domestic issue or something where someone gets stranded. And it's always amazing time when we can buy a plane ticket or a train ticket or a bus ticket back to the place where they came, so they can continue on their journey, receiving a lot of the services that they started somewhere else. So. And, and so we also, Jonathan, that's one of our vice presidents, reminded me that as we do fund these things, we talk to folks about, you know, making sure they stay where they came from, and we will, if they try to come back, try to prohibit them from doing so. And we will, if they try to come back, try to prohibit them from doing so. For example, if we did pay for someone to go back to Ohio, we would have that conversation, that we'd expect you to stay there. So outside of that, yes, reunification is very important. We do fund it. We like that. People are much more successful when they're back in their mainstream services.
What will become of the Christopher Columbus Club Memorial Courtyard, including the St. Mary's Bell, the World War II Killed in Action Memorial, the dedication bricks and benches?
We can both answer that, but from the very beginning, first I want to clarify, those are possessions of the Christopher Columbus Club, which still exists and will continue to exist throughout this project. They will have say in what happens to them. From working closely enough with them, I think I feel comfortable saying every intention would be to maintain, maybe even highlight a little better and create a space, one of the things that Harbor Light and Life Bridge have been talking about this whole time, was the ability to memorialize some of the other things, not just those things. There are things in the church, there are artifacts that I think are meaningful, that we have possession of. And so we've actually looked through the designs, and it's moved a little bit here and there, but the, the idea would be to have a space for all of those things, to preserve them and memorialize them. So the goal would be to keep them, and I think the Christopher Columbus Club would want to do the same.
Okay, great, thank you. If the zoning is approved and the project receive, receives all the required permits, how will the clients of Life Bridge be housed during construction, housed, fed, and receive supportive services? And how will the Seeds of Hope residents be housed? And will the residents be guaranteed their return after construction? And if so, will each resident in Seeds of Life Housing, Seeds of Hope Housing, receive a written guarantee of their return?
So, so the second part is more, more in our wheelhouse. So anybody in the Seeds of Hope Housing, those folks will probably end up in a temporary relocation setting, and they all have guarantee to go back into one of the other units. Now, the units that'll get built will be larger and, and modern, so they're not going to be necessarily physically in the exact same spot they came out of. Sometimes you do a project and the units are getting refurbished and you're moving people back in and out of the same exact unit, but that won't be the case here. But yes, they all will have written, all of that is very prescriptive through the Relocation Act. So they'll have written documentation about timing and where, and then we have to fund their, if they have to be temporary in a different apartment, we have to find that, fund that, support the movement back and forth. That's all, but that's all federal and state regulation we have to manage. As far as the shelter goes, because of the phasing and the physical location, where we landed was the, essentially, the new shelter will get built in space that's separate from the existing shelter and will go first, very likely. So the new shelter will get built while people are still in the existing shelter, that'll get moved, and the housing will come later and will replace the shelter space. It's not a pure one-to-one, but that's essentially the law.
Okay, great, thank you. Let's see. Does the Life Bridge purchase of the Second Congregational Church in Beverly affect or impact this project at all? Will some of the planned office space in the proposed shelter be shifted to Beverly now, affecting the project design?
Not so. I would say that we are not purchasing the Second Congregational Church in Beverly. It's being gifted to Life Bridge, the Second Congregational Church, and we will use that facility to operate supportive services for that community. In terms of office space, I can't say right now exactly, but yes, there will probably be a few people moving from Salem to Beverly, Beverly to Salem, we do this all. But honestly, I don't think.
Yeah, I think that was the question, was if you have more office space there, does it affect the office space you need in this new building?
No.
Okay, okay. And then this is just a statement, and I would love your, your feedback on this. This is from another email. "If the Life Bridge ordinance passes, construction on the new shelter would begin in 2027 or 2028. Even if construction began tomorrow, it wouldn't be ready for occupancy for years. So what happens until then? Continue to live on the street or in the woods? As planned, the expansion will utilize an outdated and insufficient case management system. The State Department of Mental Health provides each person with mental, with mental illness and cognitive disabilities with seven to 20 hours a week of case management services. If Life Bridge provided each of their proposed clients 120 combined shelter and SROs with seven hours each week, they would need 28 full-time case managers. Life Bridge has four and hopes to have four more with the expansion. They would be better off with a smaller emergency shelter, a real case management program, and enough money left over to subsidize as many apartments, real homes, as needed. And they could start serving people tomorrow."
Life Bridge and DMH are wildly different structures and organizations, and I think it's inappropriate to assume that everyone at Life Bridge needs a level of care that would rise to DMH services. A lot of the folks we serve need some basic case management services, reconnecting with family, getting an ID, helping to shop. We have a robust case management team that is complemented by supportive services. So I feel our ratios are fairly, actually great, better than most who do what we do in our field. So I, I don't think the comparison's accurate. I would also push back that DMH could do a lot more, from what I see in terms of the growing behavioral health in this community in many communities. So it's a little bit of pushback on that. I think we would like more case managers. If we could hire 20, we would. But case management really is the key. So I do agree with that. We will do robust case management.
Okay, thank you. That was what I got from all of the emails today, so I really appreciate your, your answers on this.
Sure.
Counsel, it's Counsel Harvey. Thank you, President. Andrew, I know we've had this conversation prior. So if this goes through, the new shelter is actually, according to Mayor Pangal, we're going to lose bed space when all said and done. Okay. Now, my question is, in regards to the homes, because we keep, we're talking about our community, we're talking about Salem. How many of those apartments or those homes are going to be utilized strictly for the homeless population within our city? I don't, and I'm talking like, not important people from other communities into our city, because if they fall out of the homes, now there's more homeless within our city. You know what I mean? And I kind of had mentioned this prior, it's like, I go back to the movie The Field of Dreams, if you build it, they will come. So the more, now, you're talking about restructuring the shelter, but yet there's going to be less beds. So I, I just, I don't see how this is beneficial to the, to our community itself.
Yes, I'll answer the, the local question, which you and I have talked about before. I'll let you answer the shelter, the shelter question. So I, what we had talked about it is, is still accurate, is the expectation is that the city, not through the zoning, but probably through the, the funding process around CPC and Housing Trust, would require a local preference. The state will allow a local preference up to 70%, which I expect they would grant in this case, though they control that. We have to request the level of local preference, but I expect the state would give the full 70% approval, which, it's not pure math, but you know, you get the sense that essentially this should create a much higher rate of opportunity for existing homeless individuals in Salem to access the new units and come out of settings where they would be in the shelter or up the street, therefore contributing to the solution of part of the problem and not contributing to the growth. Now, you could have more than that, that can happen, but the reg, the regulation will allow up to 70% for the local preference. So that would, and that would apply specifically to the residential units, to the apartments. That's not a shelter issue, that's a, that's a housing issue.
Now, who requests that, Harbor Light or the city itself?
It's a good question. Typically, the way that it'll roll is in the, either the permitting or the funding process locally. The municipality will require that of us and will commit to it in one of those processes so that the city has leverage over us, that it's in a document that we're required to commit to the city. But then we still have to go to the state, and, and then we, as the developers say, we're requesting a local preference approval of 70% for these reasons. We have to give them a whole bunch of data, which will be easy in this case, it has a lot to do with demand. And they will grant whatever the number is they're going to grant. So that's generally the way that it works. It's usually from the municipality to us and from us to the state and then back.
So the city can actually request more than 70%?
No, they, they can't.
That's the max.
They can't. Although I will say there's been a lot of chatter in some of the gateway cities about trying to exceed the 70% with sort of mixed results, but 70% is the stated allowable level that anybody could ask for. There has been some push exactly for this reason in some cities where they're trying to get the state to give an exception to go higher than 70%. So we've been involved in that discussion in Lynn, for example, and we're open to, we would participate in that, but I couldn't promise you that that could happen, 70%. There's the mayor behind me, I think.
David Yeo.
So, yeah, our intention is to request that the 70% local preference be included in the permitting process for this. We had hoped to actually include it in the zoning, in HLC, that it could not be placed in zoning, so we'll be going through the zoning process, through the permitting process, try to achieve that. And we are having a dialogue with HLC and the administration about ways we can expand that beyond 70%, if not for this project and for future opportunities.
Because largely, Counsel Harvey, to your point, you want to be able to say, if we're going to do this thing, it's going to help solve our problem, not make our problems, which I think is reasonable.
Well, that's what I'm trying to get at. I mean, you know, 70%, that still leaves 30% available for more people to come into the city to create more homeless, not necessarily solve our homeless problem within our community.
So you want to, you're, you have sort of a lock on the 70. The rest of it is marketing and process and like, one of the things we tell people is you have to work the waiting list hard once you get the opportunity. You have to have people apply. Thankfully, it's one of the benefits of Life Bridge being a partner and next door, is you want everybody essentially to apply for the units, because that will also affect the statistical odds of who's going to get them. You own essentially the 70% exit.
Yeah, in terms of the delta, the change in beds, what we're referring to is the transition site that we opened as a result of the ordinance for the no camping ordinance. When that does wind down, you know, probably at the end of, end of next year, yeah, there will be less beds even before we do this project. As someone stated earlier, we're, you know, we're years away. This is, those 70 beds aren't going to come online anytime soon. But, so we are going to see a decrease in beds by the end of next year. Quite honestly, a bit of a caveat to, if you build it, they will come, I'd have to say they're already here. And I think that, you know, if we could launch a 200-bed shelter and probably fill that. But that doesn't necessarily fix any problems, right? We, this is, it's a very complex issue for someone to become homeless. We decided that 70 beds, based on that facility, that size, on that land, with the partnership with Harbor Light doing the units, is the appropriate amount of beds for us and for this community. What we're going to get to at some point is there are a lot more homeless individuals than shelter beds. That's an issue with almost every community. So it's a, it's a much larger issue, and I don't think we're going to solve it, but our 70 beds, non-congregate beds, are going to be better quality, more dignity, and we'll do a much better job with the new facility than we do now with the 52 non-congregate beds. So the, the goal would be to actually move people quicker. You know, and again, we're a little bit frozen in that there's not a lot of housing options. So that's why it was important to us to partner with Harbor Light in this and bring housing as part of the solution. Life Bridge owns the property. There was a, there was a time where we were thinking that we could just build a much larger shelter. We don't believe shelter without housing is the right thing. You know, if we could trade all the shelter in for more housing someday, that would be a good day. So we're not, even Life Bridge, who runs shelters, isn't advocating for shelter. It's necessary for now, and we need it, and we need those 70 beds.
With the new shelter, are we going to be offering more services? Because homelessness, I just feel that the root cause needs to be addressed, not just the fact that people don't have a home, it has to do with the drug addiction, the mental health issues, stuff like that. Are we adding more services with the new shelter for those particular instances?
Yes, and, and that's, that's something that we've been working on over the past several years. As homelessness changes, the face of homelessness is changing, we do see a lot of folks, for example, who have some untreated behavioral health and mental health. When we see something like that, we then bring in a different group of people. We have licensed mental health counselors, we have CSWs. Try to work with these individuals in a much different way than, we'll say, a case manager. So when someone said we have four case managers, we also have free licensed clinicians on top of that. Also, we have to go deeper into our partnerships. We have a robust community health center here in Salem. We have North Shore Hospital right here in Salem. So those are also the complementary partnerships that we will work more with to try to help solve some of these problems. But yes, three hot meals and a bed does not solve the problem of homelessness. We would like to do more, add more services. Workforce development is something we've been really looking at, and it's something we can't do now in our current space, but would be doing in the new space. In other words, some basic life skills. There are a lot of restaurants, for example, in Salem, who, who do tap into Life Bridge for people to work. And I think it's kind of amazing that we could, we could, we could sort of further that a little more. Maybe there's a culinary arts program as part of this. But workforce development is part of the next phase of Life Bridge as well.
Thank you, President Pressniewski. And first of all, I'd like to say how much I appreciate the presentation, all the information we've gotten. And I also want to say how much I appreciate the work that Life Bridge is doing in this space. I'm very familiar with the work that you do, not only with the work that I do for people that are on housing insecure here, but also as a downtown resident. So I see it firsthand. And a couple of the points, I just want to say how much, you know, I appreciate is that, you know, the way that you explained that, you know, these two projects complement each other. Because, you know, the bottom line is if we are going to assist people who are unhoused, we need housing to do it. And as was expressed, you know, we need the supportive services. So I just want to recognize all of that. And yes, and a lot of, a lot of questions have already been answered. Just real quick, your day center, I think it would be great to hear a little bit more about that. I remember when I was working in your day center because the pantry operated out of there during COVID, and that was just a great space, you know, with no requirements, and people could just go there and, and chill. But you had outreach there if they wanted to pursue that and information. So I thought maybe touching on that would be helpful. Thank you.
It's, it's a, it's a service Life Bridge offers that tends to get overshadowed by shelter. We do operate a day center. It's in the former St. Mary's Church, so 54 Margin Street. And if you walk in, you're in the basement, but it's actually a store. And in there is tables and chairs and food and TVs and books and case managers and social workers and folks who want to interact with people who are, not everyone who comes to the day center is homeless. They're at the risk of becoming homeless. They might be newly housed and need a lot of support in this new part of their journey. So as far as the day center, it's a great melting pot of different populations, and we, we're seeing anywhere between 60 to 70 people a day come in and out of there. And again, it's low barrier, there's, there's no, there's nothing preventing someone from coming in. So it could be everything from someone who's suffering from addiction, wants to seek treatment, but doesn't necessarily want to go into the shelter. So we have an option for that. It could be someone who might be losing their apartment. We're getting a lot of this lately, is subsidies are drying up. All the things we did during COVID are sort of winding down. And so we have a team of case managers in our day center who are working with folks who are housing insecure to keep them housed. So again, it's a, it's a really amazing part of our service provision, and it's a great introduction to Life Bridge for folks who, you know, who might be nervous about what a homeless shelter could be. So it isn't uncommon for someone to go from the day center to the shelter after a little while, which we think is a good thing.
Counsel Haberth.
Thank you, Mr. President. And also, I don't echo the thanks for this presentation and for the time you've all taken over the last few years here. I think we get wrapped up in the changes that have gone back and forth over this project for a while here, and even in this room here, a lot of discussion about what's being added, what's being taken away. If we're summing it up, is it fair to say that with everything that happens with this project, the majority of what we're seeing is homes for Salem residents? I think a lot of the conversation is around the shelter, and we're losing the transition space. This is 20 beds, which isn't nothing, but it's 20 beds. This is 20 beds, which isn't nothing, but it's 20 beds. When I look at this project, I feel like the majority of what I'm looking at here is something close to SROs that makes up the majority of this project. And the majority of those will be housing for local preferences. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. We had talked, I think, since this project started about specifically about the board at LifeBridge. What, what is the discussion there and the hopes there around having a voting member on that board from the city of Salem? And possibly the liaison from the neighborhood association?
LifeBridge serves a, a sort of a diverse regional approach. We actually embrace and promote regional response to, to our work. And we currently have two residents of Salem who sit in our voting members, our board of directors. We have three from Beverly, two from Gloucester. So anyway, we have a facility or program, do want representation from that community. We do have it. That's not to say we wouldn't want more or couldn't add more, but at the moment we do have representation of Salem on the board.
Thanks. So the, this will be, it's, it's fair to say this will be the biggest piece of, LifeBridge will be the most invested in Salem, more than any other community, correct? In terms of your footprint and your operations.
Yeah, if this, we see this project through completion, it will probably be one of the larger facilities. We also have a fairly large footprint in Salem.
Okay, I mean, I guess I ask that to, to go back to the point about the board and having something written, I don't know if you'd call it the charter, but something written to the charter of LifeBridge about having a voting member from the city of Salem. There, you're like, we're going to be interlocking these two, the city of Salem and LifeBridge. If, if this, if this program goes forward, and I think just ensuring that the, the interest of the residents in Salem is represented on that board, I think is important. I think it's important optically, to be completely honest, but I think it's also important just operationally that we have a voice in the city of Salem that is required to be a voting member on that board.
And philosophically, I absolutely agree. It, it makes sense to have people with lived experience on boards of directors, especially at social services agencies, for example. You know, it's, it's a bit of a legal question, what you put in your bylaws and if you can mandate. But we believe that, and that's why we have, there's never been a moment where someone from the city of Salem hasn't sat on the board. And if there's a legal mechanism for us to codify that, we're open to that.
Thank you. And I had other questions, but Council Marceau asked literally every single one of those questions. So thank you.
Any further questions from the council? If not, I will now turn it over to the planning department. Let the record show that Chair Reader has joined us and Charity, Charity, we just lost our microphone. Charity, you have the floor.
If I may, I wish to thank you to every one of you being here tonight for having this opportunity to do something. We could be a force for good, partners for hope. My family was homeless. My family fell to the crack. Talked about eviction. When I was five years old, I asked my mother, what is eviction? Why do we have to store our furniture in this used car? Why do we have to go to a new place? My family, six children, homeless, family collapsed. Happens today, happens when I was a little boy. We marched down with all our goods and property in paper bags, no plastic in those days in the 50s. We marched down to the poor farm. Would I love to have that name Harbor Light, LifeBridge, to a little five-year-old boy? But I went down to 70 acre site, it across the street from the family school, the Cala Lane. I went down to a shelter called the Poor Farm. What a legacy. That's what I have. And homelessness is not new. It has a human face. You can see it in me. It's hope, homelessness, homelessness. That shelter, I've been through that shelter. It offers help. There's no panacea, no magic bullet. Samantha, the witch down the street doesn't have a magic wand to away with homelessness in Salem. See homelessness, my face, see homelessness. Former Mayor Pangello, former mayor, Driscoll was a very big advocate. Very fortunate to have Pangello take up the torch. But homelessness is a part of Salem. Let us be partners in hope and a force for good in this chamber. That was a 70 acre site. What are we talking about tonight? That was a 70 acre site, five buildings. And some members of the board may appreciate it. Who built that site? Charles Bolfinch, Charles Bolfinch built that site, the Poor Farm, that I'm a legacy of. But please consider homelessness with a human face. There's Trump, he was short, eviction, it has a human face. It's hope. I took in five children, forty different homes. Two of my sons just went to Cambodia, back from Cambodia. It's hope. You want to offer that hope, you should offer that hope. City of Salem, the city of. I thank you for being here. Thank you for anything we can do. Let's make Salem a city of hope, city of peace, what it should be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have one technical question about this, I guess, which is, I know one of the tools that has and can be used in developing services of various sources is, as was mentioned earlier, Dover Amendment. And I am curious as to what the technical differences would be in trying to go forward under that versus the 40R mechanism? Cause I know that many, I believe most of these uses could, would be covered under that. But I also know it's not, doesn't provide the opportunity for the city to have input and permitting. So if somebody could speak as to the differences and what would or would not be allowed if they chose to take that path instead? I want to make sure that's clear for everybody. Thank you.
So under the Dover Amendment, many of the uses, if not all, would be applicable under the Dover Amendment. And the city can impose reasonable regulations around dimensions and that sort of thing. That's an administrative review. It's not a review before a board. So it's a much trunk, it's a truncated process. It would not include parameters around the zoning that you see in front of you. It doesn't dictate the, the height, the setbacks. Those are reasonable regulations and it's not, it's not defined by ordinance. The, there would not be design standards. There would not be a design review board, a planning board process. So essentially it takes out the public comment period, the public hearing process. And then those set parameters and the community expectations we have based on this zoning, based on the design standards would not be part of the process. So we're just pulling up the definition, oh, sorry. We're just pulling up the definition for open space that's based in Massachusetts general law, chapter 40R. So in section two of 40R, open space shall include, but is not limited to, land to protect existing and future wellfields, aquifers, recharge areas, watershed, agricultural land, grasslands, fields, forests, fresh salt marshes, ocean, river, stream, lakes, beaches, drugs, other coastal lands, land to protect scenic vistas, land for nature preserve, recreational use. So land for recreational use, don't see that as including parking.
Thank you very much. Seeing no, seeing, present, seeing no other comments or questions from the planning board, I return it to you, Council President. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. I'll now open this up to the public for the public hearing part of the process. And if anybody would like to speak to the mic, into the microphone, could you please stand up and speak directly into the microphone so the folks can hear you at home? I'm going to ask that we start on the left side of the room and slowly move our way clockwise to the right side of the moon. So if, right side of the room. So if anybody would like to stand up and take the microphone and make their comments, you're welcome to do so.
Hello, my name is Elizabeth Miller. I live at 11 Albion Street in Ward 4. And I just wanted to speak as a public school educator who has seen the impact of the housing crisis on my students' ability to be available for education, on their ability to sort of maintain their progress across weeks, months, years. And so I am here to support the overlay because anything we can do to loosen the housing crisis, to loosen the tightness and scarcity is going to help all of our students and help our communities and their futures. That's all. Trying to keep it quick because I know we've talked a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. My name is Jim Rose. I live at 25 Linden Street in South Salem. And I think Salem has a unique opportunity to, to fill a need that's been, that's been on the table for several years. So I've had a chance to listen to many of the comments, the presentation, and I feel that we really need to address this issue. It was mentioned earlier about some of the homelessness we saw behind Wendy's there on the South River. And that, that just can't continue. We need to step up the plate and really do, do the right thing. Many other communities have chosen to pass on this, which is unfortunate. But we live in Salem and I believe we can do the right thing. And we've, the city has certainly listened to the concerns from the abutters about the height, the scope of the project. But I think we're at a point now where we really need to move forward on this. I just think that we can set a really good example for other communities on the North Shore to, to their part as well. But I just feel that the time has come. We've had enough public hearings, we've had enough scrutiny of this project. It's time to move forward and I want to see Salem do the right thing. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Faith Simons. I work as the Housing Navigator for the HOCC program, which is our domestic violence agency that covers the Essex County area. And I just wanted to speak up in support of this project because this is a huge need for survivors of domestic violence, for sure. You know, the average client who comes through the door is in need of housing. It is such a big piece of recovery and without it, it's really tough to move forward. So this, I just want to speak in support of this and just mention that, you know, we have people walking through our door who are not survivors of domestic violence, but they are desperate for housing. So I just want to, yeah, I just want to speak in support because I see this need day in, day out. So thank you for your good work.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Annie Harris from 28 Chestnut Street in Salem. Sorry for my voice. I have two questions and a comment. My questions, first question is, I was very heartened to hear that this is really kind of a Salem first, that the city can require that first preference be given to 70% of the Salem residents. Pleased to hear that the mayor's going to request that. Is that only for the first rental period or does it apply for, for all, forever? That's a question I want to answer now. I should sit down. I have another question. So that's my first question. Second question, this is a 70% of 60% AMIS, it's deeply affordable. My question on this is, does that apply to any and all developments in perpetuity at the site? So if this, something happened with this development or there was a little piece of land that still was in this piece of property, would anything else that came have to meet that criteria? And the third thing was sort of a comment. I'm really absolutely delighted to hear that Jason say tonight that they have two Salem residents on the board. I'm really pleased with the questions from the council and I really would encourage us to make sure that it is possible to make that a requirement. I know that's been something we've wanted for a long time. I'm pleased to hear it's happened. Love to see if there's possible to get a requirement. So if I could have my two questions answered, that'd be great.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Andy Lippman. I live at 28 Chestnut Street. And I hate to be redundant, but I want to echo what Councilor Hapworth said. I think it's imperative and important that there be significant representation on the LifeBridge board. Three people, for example, could be one from the neighborhood, could be a city counselor and could be one from the rest of the community. And I also want to echo Annie's comment because I think that's important as well. But I want to also add one comment of my own. And that is that I would feel much more comfortable with this if there was some way of also not just requesting of Jason, but really requiring of Jason that he provide the services that we all dream about and talk about. We have to use this as an opportunity to deal with the homeless in Salem. Both those who stay at LifeBridge, those who come to eat the meals and those who decline services at LifeBridge. And I would like to see LifeBridge take some responsibility and action for taking care of the people that bleed out of the place and occupy the rest of the seats of our streets during the day, as opposed to simply saying, once they leave my front door, there's very little that I can do. I know that some of the things that I'm asking for may be not so easy to do because the city council's job is to pass ordinances. And it may not be possible to write this into an ordinance. Maybe it's possible to require it in a charter. Maybe it's possible that if we all act together, we can ensure that it's responded to. But one of my fears is over the course of time, if money gets tight or funds disappear, the first thing that's going to go will be the services. And if that happens, that's not good for you and it's certainly not good for us. And so if there's any way that those kinds of things can be baked into the pie. And I think that it behooves you as custodians for the city to try to find that way, then we could turn this into an opportunity, not just a physical expansion, but for an expansion of how we compassionately treat both the needy and homeless in Salem, as well as respect the rest of the community. Thank you, Mr. Lippman. Moving to the right side of the room. Okay.
Hi, my name is Grace Rogers. I live at 26 New Derby. I support this measure. I have been homeless. I have been, I've lived on the streets, I've lived in a car, I have couch surf, I've lived in shelters. The three things that helped me get into stable housing were first, having a place to sleep, to sleep. Having a place that was my place where I could have my stuff I could return to. It had to be a place where I had the dignity. I wasn't required to go to services I didn't need. I've never had a substance abuse issue and some of the shelters I was in were required by local communities that I had to go to AA meetings. That was very harmful to me in trying to get help. The third thing is the services do need to be. The third thing is, the services do need to be there. But as I said, it has to be something people can access the services they need, which means not requiring them to have the services they don't need. So again, I support this. I think it's very important. And I think it will reduce the homeless population locally, North Shore, and just Salem itself. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Julia Sherhook. I'm at 15 Winter Street and I'm also speaking in support. Particularly as a downtown resident, I think it's been made really clear through this presentation that there is a pretty incredible inclusion of services in addition to different types of housing. That's something that as somebody who frequently walks in the area, I am delighted to see. And that's exactly the type of safety net that I want to exist in my community. Another fact about unhoused people that I want to remind people of as well is that over 53% of folks in shelters actually have jobs. The root cause of homelessness is not things like drug addiction. It's the affordability crisis. And giving those people who are trying to work and earn wages a stable place to sleep is the way that we address this crisis.
Thank you. I greatly appreciate this evening's presentation and the many, many, many answers that have been provided. But I still have so many questions. And every time these developers speak, I have more, I have more questions. I am at such a loss as to why we are rushing this smart growth overlay. We have not had a comprehensive discussion about homelessness and the services that are being offered, not just in Salem. Life Bridge and Harbor Light are not the only providers. I have many concerns related to the business plan for the $65 million expansion. Several questions still not answered regarding mitigation issues before, during, and after construction. And unanswered questions about financing. Life Bridge and Harbor Light keep talking about the importance of supportive services. What they say they offer is not the reality. Their staff said in a meeting, they offer one hour a month for their clients. That is woefully insufficient if you need a job or need to replace important documents. How do you do that? One hour a month? One hour? Today I submitted a letter listing several questions. But after tonight, I'll be following up with more. I have questions that still have not been answered since the developer presented in July of 2023. So I look forward to getting some answers. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Before I start, Mr. President, could you clarify? I'm obligated to speak at maximum for three minutes tonight for the public hearing.
There is no, there is no maximum. I'm just asking people to stay within the boundaries of that three-minute rule so that it doesn't get into a, a long soliloquy.
I understand. And I will be reading both sides of this and that will be it. Will be more than three minutes.
That's fine.
Good evening. My name is Caitlin Halaba and I live at 70 Boston Street. For transparency's sake, I want to mention that I am running for, to represent Ward 6 on the city council. But today I am here once again to speak about my support for the Life Bridge project and for this 40-yard zoning project. Before I get started, I want to call out something that I think every single person in this room can agree with. And that's everyone who calls the city, no one that calls the city's home should have to suffer and that we are all deserving of the support of our neighbors. I think that's pretty common ground. So as a starting point in this conversation, we need to be honest about the fact that many unhoused individuals and families are in the position that they are in because of a failure of multiple systems in our society. Preventing homelessness is possible with better support systems, but that is not something that Salem can do alone. This is a nationwide issue and it requires solutions from the region and the state. But what I want to encourage people to focus on today is not necessarily preventing homelessness, but what we as a city can do to support the people who are actively suffering from it in Salem. So I'm going to spend some time talking about statistics about who these people are, the unhoused population, because it is clear to me that there are some preconceived notions from folks in this room that are frankly not true. So we know this is a nationwide issue, so I'll start with some national statistics. About one quarter of unhoused people are suffering from drug addiction or substance abuse issues. But more than half of those people, that was an effect, not a cause. So in other words, people may develop an addiction as a coping mechanism to deal with the stress of being unhoused. Only one in eight unhoused individuals had a substance abuse issue prior to becoming unhoused. Only one in eight. One of the most alarming statistics is that 50% of people who have experienced homelessness spent time in the foster care system. Why? Because many people who age out of that system have nowhere else left to go. One that hits particularly close to home for me is that about one quarter of the transgender population have experienced homelessness. That's about 750,000 people nationwide. The number of active unhoused people is somewhere around 750 million people, just for reference. How can that be? We tend to get kicked out of our homes. So just to reiterate, the majority of unhoused people in this that are in their current living situation are not there because of their own actions, but because their home life when they were children did not support them and our support systems did, are woefully inadequate. Zooming into Salem specifically and Life Bridge, at any given time, about one-third of the residents of Life Bridge are elderly. In Salem, that same demographic only represents 16% of the population, meaning our elderly neighbors are on average twice as likely to be unhoused compared to younger residents. I don't have an exact number for this one, but I know that many of the residents in Life Bridge do actively work downtown. They work in our restaurant industry and there's a communication between Life Bridge and that industry. And about, and again, this changes, about 80% of Life Bridge residents are from Salem. So to be clear, majority of people staying at Life Bridge are from Salem. They are our parents, our grandparents, and our children. There are, of course, unhoused people who come to Salem from other parts of the state or the country. And with a few notable exceptions, it's clear why, especially around this time of year. By and large, they're seeking opportunity and a better life. There's opportunity to make money. There are jobs. There's a lot of pedestrian and vehicle traffic. Salem will always attract people who are very rationally seeking better opportunity, regardless of this 40-yard project. And that isn't going to change. So to the people who are here tonight that do not support this project, I encourage you to think about what it would be like if we didn't have Life Bridge on Margin Street. Unhoused people aren't going to stop existing anytime soon and they aren't going to stop being downtown because that's where they can make some money. Life Bridge helps people transition out of homelessness. Their work is actively addressing the situation that you are uncomfortable with or that makes you feel unsafe. If we want to remedy that, we need to support this project to help them address this problem more effectively. To provide more beds so people don't have to sleep on the street. To provide security and safety to victims of abuse who need their own space to feel safe. Now I understand that people have, are having really very real experiences that make them feel uncomfortable and make them feel unsafe around the unhoused population. I know people are finding needles in Broad Street Cemetery. One time I was personally made to feel uncomfortable by an individual while I was walking through Riley Plaza. And I know of at least one person who was violently assaulted. That is all real. It is problematic. And there are conversations that our community needs to have to ensure that we are all able to safely live here. But these are the actions of a small subsection of the unhoused population. And we cannot allow ourselves to judge the whole by the actions of a few. I want to encourage everyone to challenge your bias, in particular confirmation bias. It is natural. We are all guilty of it, but we must be aware of it. The unhoused population is not, as a whole, a group of violent, drug-addicted criminals. They are our neighbors. They are a part of our community. They are not going anywhere. And most importantly, they need our support. We just have to be cognizant that our brains are very good at jumping to conclusions and rationalizing bias, especially when it's about our safety and the safety of our families. So, councilors, I promise I'm wrapping up. As our representatives, you have a duty to the entire community. It is becoming increasingly difficult to afford to live here, especially with the actions of the Trump administration over the last nine months. The reality is that many of us are disturbingly close to losing the roof over our heads at any moment. All it takes is one bad accident, an unexpected bill or injury, the loss of a single paycheck may be two. I can promise you that even if this project goes through, and I hope that it does, between now and when the construction will be finished, at least one of your constituents will be in a situation where they needed the bed and the services that Life Bridge offers. And they will not be able to get it because Life Bridge will not have the capacity. So please think about that and consider that as you vote tonight and then next coming weeks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lydia King. I live at 4 Forest Avenue. I'm looking at a couple empty chairs, but speaking in general to all 11 councilors here. I know that, I've talked with all of you a lot and you all have a lot of deep personal empathy for the population that we're speaking about tonight, all of you, in your own different ways. And I know you all deeply, deeply care about our unhoused population and people who are struggling with housing insecurity here in Salem. If my math is right, about half of you won't be in these seats in January just because people are stepping down and things like that. You have the opportunity to do something incredible. You all have worked so hard the last two, four, six years, depending on who you are, for this population. And you can really leave a legacy with moving this project forward. One that you can be really proud of and can really capstone your ongoing accomplishments or maybe the tail end of your legacy here. But it's a really, really fantastic legacy to really make a huge investment in an issue that you all agree is super, super important and critical to the long-term future of Salem. So I, for that reason alone, I hope you all will vote in favor of sending this along to the planning board and then later in the November and December city council meetings. I will also just add that the supportive services that are provided, especially on the Harbor Light side of this model, are really well backed up by data. They have a really, really great success rate of helping people exit the cycle of homelessness. When we think about the long-term impacts for the city of Salem, they're there. It's, the data, the data really supports it. I'm also very happy to see the 70% local preference. I think most people here are. So happy about that specifically. And also just really impressed with how well the developers and the planning board and the mayor answered all the questions tonight. I feel like there's been a lot of questions over many years and we've seen so much growth with how well they're answering those questions and they're ready and they really have heard the feedback from the community. And I will just say for those who still have questions, because it's totally valid, I really appreciated the senior planner, Elena Immer, mentioning that there will be, as individual buildings move forward for this project, there still will be design review board, historical commission. There will still be opportunities for additional commentary and feedback and questions as the project moves forward. So I really hope you will take this big step to get us moving along. But there will be more opportunities for feedback that have it, for people that have it along the way. So thank you.
Hello, my name is Megan Ammer. I live at 27 Zerry Road. I just wanted to voice my support for this project. I must sometimes volunteer at Life Bridge and I also know what it's like to help family members try to find housing. So, thank you.
Hi, my name is Eileen Fitzgerald. I live two blocks from the shelter on Winthrop Street. I lived there before the shelter was built and for the many years since, it has been the current location. I strongly believe that an expansion of the shelter is the wrong decision for Salem to make. Regulations are meant to protect residents from buildings and businesses that are out of scale and out of character for a neighborhood. Current laws do not allow this project to be built. So why is this expansion even being considered? Because some people from outside of Salem bought a building here? Because a developer wants it? If it is so easy to disregard regulations in a neighborhood, then there are plenty of other options, plenty of other neighborhoods that can and should host additional shelters just by a building and ignore any inconvenient laws that stand in the way. Here are several of the objections that I have to this plan to vastly expand the current shelter. The size of the proposed project is overwhelming to the neighborhood. It will block light and views of the sky, crowd out trees, and makes High Street Park, the only park for many blocks, cramped and unpleasant. Traffic is already very complicated in this area. This part of Margin Street is an essential junction for people in our neighborhood to get across town. A large facility crammed into this small area will make the traffic even more impossible as increased numbers of residents and additional staff, volunteers, and visitors need to drive and park. Pedestrian traffic is also heavy around the current shelter. It concerns me that any student from Collins Middle School who lives across Canal Street or Lafayette Street or in the Point neighborhood has to walk past the shelter as they go to and from school. Given how Salem streets are laid out, it's the only way to get across town. Staff at Life Bridge say that their residents will not bother children walking home from school. That's great to hear. But I have learned from meetings with Life Bridge staff and with police that the shelter is not responsible for residents when they are outside the facility. Life Bridge is also not responsible for people who have been removed from the shelter for behavior reasons or rule infractions, like using or selling drugs. Life Bridge is not responsible when beds are unavailable for people who have been dropped off at the shelter from other towns. Are the people that I see camped out on the bike path or hanging out near the shelter even aware that there are rules to be followed? Building a big shelter in this neighborhood will not solve homelessness, but it will encourage people from other towns without homeless shelters to come to Salem. I ask the city council, the planning board, and the mayor to do the, to do the difficult job of working with area towns and state leaders to create an actual solution, one that will not harm this historic, working-class neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Joseph R. Injami Jr. I reside at 85 Moffett Road in Salem. 50 years ago is the last time I was in these chambers and I sat in that seat for eight years as a Ward 3 counselor. Today I'm representing the Christopher Columbus Society on Endicott Street, which is part of this project. Christopher Columbus Society, over the years, has had all kinds of scholarships that we handed out thousands of dollars. We have leagues, dot, golf. We had monthly dinners for anybody that wanted to come in. Membership is not ethnic. You don't have to be Italian to belong there. Anybody can join. When I was on the city council, I served under three mayors. Two years with Francis X. Collins, two, three years with Samuel Zoll, and the remainder with Jean Leveque, who was here long after I was gone. And each one was different. But I would tell you this, under Samuel Zoll... But I would tell you this, under Samuel Zoll, the plan in the city was tear down all these old buildings. And he said, no, we're doing urban renewal. And you could see that was a great success as opposed to putting up new buildings. I was also instrumental in introducing the first historic district in the city of Salem at the bequest of Jerry and Abby Burns on Chestnut Street. You know, that's been quite a success. I would tell you that in both of those incidents, there's been pushback. People didn't want historic districts. They wanted to knock down the old buildings. Those were tough decisions. The council had to make those decisions, and they made the right ones, as you could well know at this time. So I'm asking you to support this. This would mean that the society would be able to continue in its almost present location. Over the years, there's been a great Hispanic population that's moved into the area around the society. Many of them are also members of the Christopher Columbus Society, take part in the various leagues that we present. So please do everything you can to make sure LifeBridge gets through, and not just for the society, but for the sake of you and me. We could be looking for a place in LifeBridge. We've certainly had golden opportunities in our lives. Some people never had those opportunities. So this is the time when we can make it right. We're never going to have enough housing. Population continues. Please support it. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Ed Sacco from Winthrop Street, and I wanted to talk a little bit about services for homelessness. There's a lot going on and a lot is changing nationally and in this state also. What seems to be going on the most is that they're discovering that very intensive services are the, the actual thing that will solve homelessness. And we're seeing that the services that are provided here are not those types of services. They're not intensive. They are services that, excuse me, they're not the intensive services that are being recommended. And gee, I'm kind of losing my train of thought here. What happens with the services here is that they only have four case managers right now. They're planning on another four case managers, which would help the situation a lot. But they actually would need about 28 case managers to do the amount of work that is actually needed by the homeless people in this, in this city. It's a very hard thing for me to say to you guys, but I think that you know better. You know that these are the services that have been successful. Services have been successful where large places have been unsuccessful in solving homelessness. There are many big cities that have been trying with services and have been very successful. Dallas is the most recent one. They actually have no homeless people living on the street at this point in time, and it was because they did very good services. The services need to be case managers who will, number one, have a service plan for every individual to help that individual overcome whatever barriers are preventing them from finding housing. Then they also need to have subsidized housing. Everyone is saying that the problem is the amount of money. People don't have money, cannot afford it. And the truth is that that is the number one cause for homelessness. That is the biggest reason we're seeing more and more homeless people all the time. And subsidizing housing is the way to go. If you subsidize housing, you're helping people get real homes, which is important, not just a big congregate facility. And it is a congregate facility. I know you, you don't agree with it.
Mr. Sacco, please address the chair, not the, not the audience.
Okay. And it's, it is a congregate facility, meaning that you're congregating people into one spot. It's not a barrack-style living situation, but it is a congregate facility. And congregate facilities have not been successful. They have kind of dumped people onto downtowns. People do not get the services that they actually need. They need a service plan. They need people who will work with them to, to overcome all their barriers to get into housing, and they need to be subsidized. Those are the programs that have been successful. The large congregate facilities have not been successful. They've had a lot of back, pushback and a lot of blowback and have not really solved the problem. People are still there. They're also the most expensive service that you can provide and the least effective. You can do a lot better with, with intense services and subsidized housing. That is the way to go. That is the way I wish this city would go. That is the way it will eventually go. My biggest fear with the LifeBridge project is that it will be obsolete before it is even built. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Elizabeth Page in Chestnut Street in Salem. There are many problems with this proposal, but I'd like to just focus a bit on some of the specific zoning and planning issues. There was a question tonight about the coastal resilience overlay district, which was enacted just over a year ago by the, by the city, known as the Sea Rod. The language of the Sea Rod specifically says that it overrides all other zoning. The maps, the city's own maps, show for this site, most of this site, a base flood elevation of 13 feet. The state has recently modified the building code to require a three-foot freeboard. That is the level of the first floor above the flood elevation. That means in the very worst-case scenario, the buildings could have an additional height of 16 feet. Now, I don't know the datum point for this particular site, and 16 feet is admittedly highly unlikely. It's more likely to be closer to six feet total. But the point is, you probably don't know either the planning board or the city council. Even at that, it is very likely that this entire project needs to be redesigned. No bedrooms along the sidewalk, no utilities in the basement, a building that overwhelms the church. Maybe it means things get to be really worst-case, entire first floor is parking. The point is, we don't know. When this was mentioned to the developers at a meeting a year ago, they'd never heard of the Sea Rod. But surely the planning board and the city council can't sign off on this until they know the answers, not a guess, but you know the answers and the ramifications for design. Secondly, once a 40R is established, we have pretty much no say about what happens as long as it's within the zoning envelope. LifeBridge says that they will have 70 beds. There is absolutely nothing that prevents them from flooring over the church nave, which is right now that double-height space, or repurposing the so-called workforce development spaces to include more beds. They could convert to bunk beds, much as they did at Canal Street. Those 70 beds could double, nearly triple on day one, firmly, firmly establishing Salem as the headquarters of North Shore Homelessness, Inc. Is that really how we want to brand our city, our downtown? You can prevent this by providing a cap on the allowed numbers of beds in the zoning in this location. Finally, no one in this room denies the need for housing or for shelter beds. No one. Zoning is about use, and it's about location and the marriage of the two. You don't have to be an urban economist to understand the effects of an expanded homeless shelter on the many possible development sites around Riley Plaza. Perversely, it will suppress the development of the very kind of housing we so desperately need, including the housing being proposed by Harbor Light, I would say. Why would we do something so stupid? Cities like Portsmouth, Portland, Maine, Quincy, and Brockton, which are our sister cities as gateway communities and/or tourist meccas, are way ahead of us. They have already lived this. They learned their lesson. We are reacting, we are reacting to a developer proposal, but they planned, they actually planned. They worked with stakeholders, and they have relocated their shelters, still within their cities, but out of their downtowns. We can too. We can find a better solution that works for everybody, including the most vulnerable among us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I was out there and I was on Zoom. I promise I've been listening, and then I just came. My name's Andrew, Andrew Smith, 12 Gifford Court. I want to speak to you tonight in support of this project. I've really appreciated what I've heard around the room. It sounds like there is a lot of support for this project from the community. I also believe that the questions have been addressed, asked and answered, to a great deal of satisfaction over the last few years. I only wish that this had happened sooner. I only wish that this had been pushed forward quicker, sooner, to help the people that this is going to help. What I'm hearing here is that LifeBridge, Salem Mission, which is actually their legal name, is reframing the mission, and they're moving from being just a homeless shelter to something more. They're being a place for hope. They're giving some of that land over to actual housing for people who will now be formerly homeless. If that isn't taking a step towards solving the homeless crisis, then I don't know what is. It sounds to me like they are doing exactly what we want them to do. And so I hope that the planning board will approve this. I hope that the city council will approve this in helping them to continue and further and reframe this mission around what needs to be done, while also expanding the day center. They're going to have less beds overall and more people to help the people in those beds, more dignity for those people with the non-congregate living. To me, these are wins across the board, and I am so pleased to hear that Salem is doing something so smart, because I believe that this is a smart play, stepping forward into the right direction. So thank you so much for considering this. Thank you for moving this forward, and I'll thank you in advance, hopefully, for passing this at the soonest availability. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Jessica Cristel, and I live on Endicott Street. I've lived on Endicott Street for almost 20 years now, so we've been neighbors with LifeBridge for quite some time. And scale issues aside of, of the size of this proposal, which many people have spoken to, and I also have concerns with, I think the bigger issue here is the issue of LifeBridge and being a good neighbor. Because all of what that last gentleman just said about wanting to have the hope brought back and have more opportunity to help more people is wonderful, but the day-to-day reality of that is not always the case. And as you said, I agree that most unhoused people are not dangerous or criminals or addicts. That is absolutely true. But there are people that have been at LifeBridge for years, like a decade or more, wandering around, and if they're not responsible for them once they physically leave the doors, how do you reach them so that they're not still there causing problems for other people? How do you reach them to give them the help that they need, they clearly need with, you know, when, when they leave your doors? How do you get them to want to stay in the day, in the day program to get services so that the people in the neighborhood aren't afraid to walk by Riley Plaza or don't change, change their route when they walk home at night because they don't want to go through Riley Plaza because they don't feel safe? Those are real issues, and those are real concerns that a lot of the residents in our neighborhood have had for many, many years that have never fully been answered. So to have this now new space that's maybe not going to have more beds and maybe will have more services, I hope that that's true, and I hope that those service, services really bear out. But their record thus far has not borne that out. And so I think the gentleman from Chestnut Street had talked about baking something into the, into the pie, if you will, of having some kind of accountability and, and follow up with LifeBridge to see, are, are they really doing enough hours per, for services for the, their clients? Because their clients deserve that as much as anybody else does. If that's not happening, we will have invested a huge amount of time, money, and space to this, to this program that's not going to really do anything better for the residents than it currently is. So I want to make clear that, you know, I think a lot of people think that our, our neighborhood is just, oh, we don't want this big monolith building in our neighborhood, and that's really not it. You know, sightlines and visibility and scale aside, we want to be able to work and be good neighbors with LifeBridge, and they have not always held up their end of things to the point where people don't always feel safe. And so that's something I need, I think you need to take into consideration when you decide on this, on this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, anyone in Zooland?
Hello, can you hear me?
Crystal Brown, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. So my name is Crystal Brown. I've been a homeowner at 13 Meadow Street in Ward Five since 2022. I grew up in Chelmsford, and much of my family is from the North Shore. In August of 2024, I shared my story with many of you about nearly losing my home when I was a senior in high school. That was 18 years ago. Even as a homeowner now, I know that security is fragile, and I know how quickly it can be lost. Tonight, I've heard a lot of fear and misinformation. Some neighbors say, we've hosted LifeBridge for long enough, no one else will want to do this. But LifeBridge doesn't just serve the block, it serves all of Salem. Every one of us benefits from having fewer people forced to sleep outside, fewer emergency calls, and fewer lives that could be lost to exposure. Hosting LifeBridge is not a burden. It's what makes Salem a caring and responsible city. Others argue that expanding LifeBridge won't solve homelessness, that we need permanent housing instead. Yes, of course, we need permanent housing, which is the goal, but without housing and shelters, people can't make it to that step. LifeBridge is not just beds. It provides case management, health support, and a pathway forward. To suggest otherwise erases the lives that it saves every single day. And there's also claims about crimes, density, and neighborhood character. Let's be clear, there's no evidence that shelters increase crime. In fact, when people have a safe space inside, we all benefit. As for density, we're in a housing crisis. Density is how we create solutions. Salem cannot be inclusive while injecting the very tools that make inclusion possible. The truth is simple. Shelters reduce harm. Affordable housing strengthens neighborhoods. LifeBridge is not the problem, it's part of the solution that we need. And I urge you all, councilors and my neighbors, to reject fear, reject misinformation, and support the 40R expansion of LifeBridge, because I believe that Salem is strongest when all of us, housed and unhoused alike, have a place to call home. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Veronica Miranda.
Thank you. My name is Veronica Miranda, and I live at 9 Garden Terrace in Salem. I'm a mental health clinician here in Salem, and I've experienced homelessness before obtaining affordable housing here. I'm super grateful for that affordable housing, but I did just want to share from things that I've heard in this space, from both my personal and professional experience, healing and recovery doesn't happen without a safe place to live. Experts call this housing first, as I'm sure many of you have heard, and the evidence is clear that it works. This council has the opportunity to reflect their compassion and public support for this project. As some have mentioned, this project has already been watered down too many times, and it's time to move forward with courage, evidence, and compassion. I hope that you'll support this.
Thank you. Joe Coltrera, Mr. Coltrera.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Hi there. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Council. My name's Joe Coltrera. I've already sent a couple of letters in. This is a much-brigged version of that. You'll be happy to hear. For around 20 years, my neighborhood in Salem has been the only one on the North Shore that has hosted a homeless complex like Life Bridge. The only time you hear from us is when Life Bridge decides to push our buttons, when their promises become lies, when they disregard our history and our quality of life, when they dare to view our neighborhood as their campus. For the last three years, we have presented facts, figures, experiences that contradict the information Life Bridge suspenses to you. We have offered lists of unanswered questions. We, as taxpayers, homeowners, and renters, deserve answers, not dismissal. We want to have a dialogue and not another forum like this with more speeches. We've been asking for this for a while, and it's never happened. This project is nowhere near the point of allowing the invasive rezoning being proposed here. The Life Bridge model isn't working. It's a model that hasn't worked in any cities downtown. Instead of replacing this broken wheel with a new one, we need to rethink how the whole contraption runs, and we need to have a discussion of what that looks like. This project adds 16 additional apartments and 30 additional shelter beds to the ones Life Bridge currently has. This is according to their figures. That's 46 new people to be served at a cost of $65 million. That breaks down to over $1,413,000 per new bed. Now, if Life Bridge just offered those people $100,000 each in cash, they could rent a $2,000 apartment for four years while using part of it for a down payment on their own condo. Life Bridge could offer that sum to over 400 people and still have $25 million left over to provide services and support. Or Harbor Light could use part of that $65 million to buy 30 existing buildings in various communities at $1 million apiece. Those buildings could house almost 200 people, and then there would still be $35 million left to renovate Life Bridge and provide more on-one-on-one care for the tenants of these new homes. So for all the dollars and disruptions, this project will not create a better Salem. It will not lead to less people on the street or lighten the load on our overburdened police force. This project will attract more unhoused people to Salem, drawn to a bigger, shiny facility, the only one in the area. The homeless aren't going to disappear inside Life Bridge. Why? Because few will be offered housing there. And while the current facility has outdoor space between buildings where clients congregate, the new one has none. This will only force more people into our neighborhood, Riley Plaza, and downtown. Life Bridge says they need more space, but they already have a new facility in the Beverly Church and an underused space in St. Mary's Italian Church. It's not for lack of space that Life Bridge doesn't offer better services. Their underpaid staff is in constant turnover, and they're insufficient in numbers and experience. Life Bridge will need more money to keep this bigger facility running, leaving less money for staff, and with federal cuts growing, where is this money coming from? Passing the zoning under the guise of fighting homelessness and providing affordable housing is like the federal government bolstering the coal industry while ignoring the black lung health issues of coal miners. This expansion is not good for the unhoused. It's certainly not good for the people in our neighborhood or our city, but it is great for the vultures that circle this industry of homelessness: lobbyists, lawyers, architects, developers, construction companies, and the executives of Life Bridge and Harbor Light. The 40R proposal that was submitted to the Commonwealth was required to include public comment. 167 of those letters and emails were against this project. 67 were in support. A petition against the zoning with 800 signatures was also included, and yet this moves forward. You were letting us speak because it is required, but you've already made up your mind. There is no democracy in Salem. We don't want a king in Washington, nor do we want one on Washington Street. Long after this group of city councils leaves office and the Life Bridge and Harbor Light executives and board members turn over again and again and head back to their faraway homes, there will still be unhoused people on the streets of Salem, drawn by the Life Bridge beacon. In my neighborhood, its history discarded, and its residents doomed to host this homeless detention camp will still be on edge, still unsafe, still cleaning up the mess our former mayor began, and this mayor and city council seems eager to rub a stamp. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. I actually think there was one more person in the audience that would like to... Hello? Did I just lose the microphone? There's one more gentleman in the audience that wishes to speak, so can you just step up to the microphone? And one more on Zoom, and that'll call the night.
Hi, John Fennon, 90 Marge Street. I live in the neighborhood. My family has been there since 1964. Name and address. I'd like to echo what Joe Coltrera says. It's been 20 years, and the problem doesn't get better, it gets worse. And one of the councilors said something about being, having a resident or a local person on the board of Life Bridge. That was promised day one under Mayor Yusevich, and there's a letter saying that. Joe Coltrera does have that letter. I still had a copy, and if you guys wanted to see that letter saying that there was supposed to be a member from the neighborhood on the board, that's a fact. In fact, originally, there was a member from the neighborhood. He was a psychologist, and he lived on Prescott Street, two houses up from me. When he got off the board, that was it. We weren't represented anymore, and we never really knew what that organization was doing down, now we call Life Bridge. I am against this because they say they're going to end homelessness, but all we've seen is they originally were down closer to town on a side street. I forget exactly the name of the street. But when they moved here, our neighborhood has been very uncomfortable, and it gets more uncomfortable every year. I walked here today from Marge Street and had to walk across that area, and I feel very uncomfortable. I felt very uncomfortable walking by there. My tenant, female tenant, walks by there. They had, like a couple of the neighbors said, it's uncomfortable to go by there. And I want to echo what the lady on Phelps Street said. All true. It's a lot for us to absorb. It has had nothing but a negative effect on our neighborhood, and I cannot see spending whatever the amount, was he say $65 million? I can't see it. It's not going to, we're not going to get a bang for our buck here. It's just, it's just not going to solve the problem. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have one more person in Zoom. Pamela J., go right ahead and speak.
Hi there, I'm Pamela Zombek. I live on 19 Gedney Street. I also submitted a letter against this. I can't really add much to what Joe had to say. I've lived in Salem for 20 years, and I've seen, and I came here from Seattle, and I can tell you what's happened in Seattle. I see a lot of similarities going on here. It's not that any of us are okay with what's happening, it's how it's being addressed or not addressed, and it seems like it's just getting worse. I think what I was struck by was the beginning, we heard about how all this, you know, the unaffordability in Salem, when for the past 10 or 15 years, all that we've heard is more building will make the cost go down, and that's not been the case. It's very expensive here. I agree with so many people who brought viable solutions tonight, like there's empty facilities. Why would you build? It's not even sustainable to build something if you can leverage facilities that already exist. Or somebody else mentioned the bit about the other cities who have invested heavily in services. So I know that this is a multi-pronged issue. My heart goes out for people who desperately need help but are afraid to go to Life Bridge because of the volatility of the environment. I know for my own self, walking down my block, it smells terrible. There's garbage all over the place, and that used to never be. It's increased over the past couple of years because there's more people coming here. I feel a large part of what's happened with Life Bridge, and I wish to God it weren't true, but all around the post office, anywhere in this whole little neighborhood, I can't even imagine for the residents who are right across from the street, because I see it just a couple of blocks over. And I guess I just don't, I don't agree or understand why we would concentrate this in a downtown area where tourism is like the big fund here. There's so many other places and opportunities that making Salem ground zero for all North Shore homelessness is just, it's insanity. So I profoundly disagree with us and really stand with a lot of the things that have been said tonight against us. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Marcello?
I move to close the public hearing.
Council Marcello moves to close the public hearing. All those in favor? All those opposed? Public hearing is closed. Chair Ryder?
Still moved. Second.
Thank you, Council Marcello.
Thank you, President. I move that the matter be referred to the planning board for their recommendation.
Council Marcello moves that this matter be moved to the planning board for their recommendation. All those in favor? All those opposed? Madam Carries? Chair Ryder, anything further?
No.
Council Marcello?
I move that we adjourn.
Council Marcello moves for adjournment. All those in favor? We are adjourned.